Good evening and welcome to the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce's Candidates Forum. I'm Kelly Pappas, co-chair of the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee. The Chamber of Commerce provides opportunities and advocacy for our members on many levels. For small businesses, we offer opportunity for growth and increase business through networking and professional development. Within economic development, we focus on transportation, commercial space, and regulations. For workforce development, we work with businesses and local and regional educational and training institutions to maximize employment in the greater Burlington area. Lastly, we focus on community relations through the facilitation of partnership opportunities with local schools, community groups, and nonprofit organizations. The Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce's charitable foundation provides scholarships and support to local schools, communities, and nonprofit organizations. On behalf of the Chamber, I would like to welcome you to this evening's forum. This event is part of our ongoing commitment to voter education to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. We hope that over the course of this program, you will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for the Burlington community. Welcome to each of our candidates, Mike Runyon and Nick Priest. Our moderator for this evening is Rich Hosford from BAC. I will start by explaining some procedures for the forum, which the candidates have already received ahead of time. So instructions for the candidates: You'll have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. There will be a one-minute rebuttal after each question. Opening and closing statements will be done with Nick going first, based on a coin toss we already did. I will be the timekeeper. I'll be sitting right over there with the big flags. When there are 15 seconds left of your speaking time, I will hold up the yellow flag. When your time is ended, I will hold up the red flag. Please wrap up when you see the red flag. If you continue speaking after the red flag is held up, the moderator will thank you and move on to the next question. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. Please note the camera in the back of the room. This forum is being recorded by BAC and will be rebroadcast this week on the government channel. You will also be able to access it online on YouTube. Please check BAC's website for listings and links. Instructions to the audience: Please turn off or silence your cell phones now if you haven't already. We request that you treat the candidates fairly and respectfully. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after all closing statements, you may clap for the candidates. No campaign literature or signs are allowed in the room. This forum will be spent answering a four-part question presented by the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce. Then we will open it up to randomly drawn questions that have been submitted by the public. With that, I will turn it over to Rich Hosford.
Due to some technical issues, we're all using the same mic for the taping today. So, all right. As Kelly said, each candidate is allowed one opening statement. There was a coin flip that was done prior to it, and it was one by Nick, and he opted to go first. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so the mic is yours. All right, thank you. So, thank you to the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum together. Thank you to the Mass Hospital Association for hosting, and thank you, everyone, for coming. Really appreciate it. My name is Nick Priest. I'm a lifelong resident of Burlington. My father was a police officer here in town for many years, and he and my mother raised me with values that I carry with me today: Respect, discipline, kindness, honesty, responsibility. It's these values that my wife and I instill in our children every day. My wife and I were very lucky to purchase a home here in Burlington. We knew we wanted to be here, close to Boston, accessible to multiple highways, good schools, amenities. We could build our version of the American dream. Continue to call Burlington home. I'm here because Burlington is my home, and I want to make a difference. I have spent the last 10-plus years building my career in the marketing and advertising industry, running for national and global clients, hiring staff and partnering with vendors, and helping to manage and rationalize return on investments for clients' budgets. I've had the good fortune to spend a good deal of my time working in healthcare advertising, specifically rare diseases and their treatments. In this space, I've helped businesses position themselves and communicate effectively with their audiences. I've also been afforded the opportunity to gain extensive research-driven and legal experience, because everything I say, write, or recommend has to be factual and abide by the legal precedent. I have to do all of this while still being able to excite, connect with, and deliver easy-to-understand information to my audience. All of this experience is directly transferable to the role of selectmen. Burlington is a town full of opportunity, opportunity that I feel uniquely positioned to help grow in the coming years as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Burlington has the opportunity to identify itself and become a proactive and engaging town that will continue to be attractive to businesses and residents looking for a home and community. Burlington can be better, and new leadership can shine a light on what is possible, not on what is just practical. I'm looking to engage with the community in new and interesting ways. I want to have wide-ranging and inclusive discussions, find community-driven solutions, and take real action on issues that will continually arise in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike?
Thank you, Richard, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Runyon. I'm a lifelong resident of Burlington. Burlington High School, Class 76 graduate, where I met my wife Lisa of 40 years. Together, we have three children and six grandchildren. I got along, I, many years ago, growing up in town, my folks encouraged all of us, all of our children, all of the kids in the family, there were seven of us in the family, to get involved in the community. And at a very early age of 11 or 12, I first started volunteering with the Special Olympics Program locally, and I've never looked back since then. I do a lot of volunteer work in the community over the years with youth sports as my children were growing up. I continue to volunteer with the Meals on Wheels Program. I'm chairman of the Fourth of July Committee here in Burlington. I do a lot of work with the veterans in the community. We feed the veterans in the VA, Bedford VA. We host them here at the American Legion every year. We travel to Boston every holiday to feed the veterans at the shelter in Boston. I do a lot of volunteer work for the Relay for Life. I bring a fire truck down for a fire truck pull recently at the Fox Hill School. I man the wish tree at the mall every year. I'm at the Pumpkin Patch in November, raising money for the people, helping people, folks. Recently, helped teach first aid for the Town Reserve Corps. Those are just some of my volunteer obligations that I've had over the years. I've held elective office for the last six years on the Board of Selectmen. I've served 12 years as a town meeting member, three years at the Burlington Housing Authority, and I've held numerous other positions on different committees over the last 30 years. And I look forward to serving another term on the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Now, as Kelly mentioned, the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce has set up a four-part question. I'm going to read it in full now. If either candidate wants me to read it in full as we get to the subsequent parts, just let me know. But it is the following: "The Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce promotes and advocates on behalf of organizations doing business in the greater Burlington area. These businesses account for nearly two-thirds of Burlington's tax base, and a large number of those businesses are owned by and/or employ Burlington residents. If elected, how will your efforts as selectmen positively impact the following?" And I'll read them all at the beginning. "economic development and retention, protecting small businesses, housing, and finally, transportation." So for the first part, we're going to start off with the first category, which is economic development and retention. I think we'll go in reverse order of the opening statements.
Thank you, Richard. I mean, we've been very fortunate here in Burlington for many, many years, given our location along the Route 128 Belt. Recently, Department of Revenue has certified that Burlington has finally eclipsed walls ham in terms of commercial real estate value. Now, the challenge ahead is, how do we sustain that king-of-the-hill status? And, you know, we had a government review committee meeting last night. It was very interesting. We had Kristin Kastner, our planning director, and our building inspector, John Clancy, were there. They, you know, they touched on a few items that we need to think about, and one of them is the fact that we really don't have a economic development person, per se, in Burlington. Those duties tend to be split between the town administrator and the planning director. So I think something along those lines to fine-tune those duties, because the competition is getting tough out there. You know, we're in a very envious position, having such a strong commercial sector, that other towns are beginning to take notice, and there's going to be a lot of pressure on us to be able to maintain that status as king of the hill. So, you know, we intend to work closely with the state. We've been fortunate to receive grants in the last several years to help us in terms of transportation and infrastructure. We, you know, we support and we participate with the efforts of the Middlesex III Coalition, which is a regional group that we, the Board of Selectmen, work closely with. We work closely with the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary Club. So I see, and one of the challenges I see ahead that we need to work, be attentive to, is the Amazon effect. We've got a lot of retail here in Burlington, and it could be, you know, a real challenge for us in the future. So we are aware, keenly aware of that, and we ought to take steps to protect those retail businesses in town.
Now, candidates are allowed a one-minute rebuttal. That would, I think, set up the option for another one, but it's your question anyway, so would you like to just answer?
I'll just answer.
So I actually agree with Mike on a lot of what he just said. I think that, you know, as we evolve as a community, we need to set our sights towards how Burlington can continue to be a viable location for businesses. And an economic development director is right in that sweet spot, somebody who is going to, you know, work between the town and the businesses that are looking to come to Burlington to really set expectations and find, you know, ways proactively to invite businesses here. There are so many small startup life sciences and biotech firms that are fighting for space in Boston and Cambridge. Kendall Square right now, down where I work, is absolutely a madhouse full of all these companies that are just looking for space. And, you know, we have it. And, you know, if we can find a way to get somebody to work between, you know, those companies in Burlington, I think it'd be a win-win. I think something else, too, that, you know, we need to kind of set our sights on is, you know, when you think about retention, and when you talk about why are businesses going to stay in Burlington, I think a big piece of that is culture. You know, we have to be offering businesses and residents alike reasons to be more engaged with their surroundings, whether that be parks, playhouses, things more than just restaurants, right? How can we start upping our cultural game so that we are a culturally vibrant town that businesses are like, yes, I want to be here, my employees want to be here, my clientele wants to be here, because there are things to do, and because Burlington is pretty awesome? You know, so I think that that would be, you know, something that we should absolutely foster. The trick is, the more you talk about culture, the less it actually prevails. So, you know, we have to lead through action and not just words. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Any rebuttal, Mike?
I'll try.
Okay. It's a nice gentlemanly discussion we're having. So the next part, and we'll start with Nick on this one, is the protection of small businesses. How would you, as a board member, help protect small businesses in town?
So I think for a long time, small businesses have been what has made Burlington, you know, a great place to be. Mom-and-pop shops, you know, everyone knows everyone. And in recent years, we've kind of lost some of that, you know, and I think that we need to kind of refocus our sights a bit to invite small businesses back, family-owned restaurants. I know that as a father of two small children, it's very difficult to take my family out to eat in Burlington. I can't take them to Del Frisco's or Capital Grill, and, you know, it's, I mean, they're going to eat chicken nuggets, and they're only going to eat half of it, and it's not worth it. So what can we do? How can we find ways to invigorate and welcome small businesses? Town Center is going to be an up-and-coming area, right? We're looking to redevelop certain areas. You know, we have what used to be the Building 19 lot coming into fruition. This is where we need to start, you know, opening our arms a bit to small businesses and saying, come, you know, be a part of Burlington, be a part of our community. And one of the great ways I think that we can do this is actually through our liquor licenses. So I'm not, you know, for doling out liquor licenses left, right, and center, but, you know, there is a way to offer a liquor license to a small business, to a family-owned restaurant. And if for some reason that family-owned restaurant does not stick around for very long, or, you know, can't sustain its business, that liquor license reverts back to the town. The town holds control of that. And I think that that's a great way for the town to incentivize small businesses and family-owned restaurants to come set up shop, and it also helps us retain a bit of control in terms of what's going to go over next, should a business not sustain.
All right, and same question to you, Mike, protecting small businesses.
Thank you, Richard, again. You know, we all see the growth and redevelopment at Third Ave and District here recently, and that's what, you know, most of the conversation is about. We do tend to lose sight, though, of the fact that we do have a thriving small business sector here in Burlington as well. You start down at one end of Cambridge Street, you get Bickford's and the Cafe Escadrill, and you go all the way down to Lester's Barbecue at the Bubbaq Align. There's a lot of family-owned businesses along the way. You know, Tommy Goach's, his insurance is there, Paulie Sprage's, his gas station, Litchfield Real Estate, Chang's Walk, Andy Tatu's Dry Cleaner, Keen Carpet, there's a few Indian restaurants, Korean barbecue, ice cream stores, a lot of small businesses down there on Grant Ave, doctors, dentists, hair salons, nail salons. We do have a thriving area of town where small business is doing quite well. You get down to Windmere, you get the, you know, the Restivo family, and Sammy Suparitz been down there forever, Sullivan's Funeral Home, Morandi's, been cut in half for 60 years, Davy Norton across the street with Liquor Camp. All these people live in town, they work here, same thing, 62 Plaza, you get some folks down there, Burlington people as well. That being said, I mean, we, you know, we do not lose sight of the fact that the small business has been a part of Burlington. The Burlington Board of Selectmen has made it quite clear recently, talking about liquor licenses when we went to town meeting, we made it very clear that these liquor licenses, we are dedicated to the Overlake District along Cambridge Street. We want smaller, family-style restaurants in that area. We made it quite clear in the Board of Selectmen's meetings, we made it quite clear at town meeting, that that is our goal. So we can't name the tenants, it's not our property, but a little friendly persuasion, hopefully will go a long way in redevelopment down there.
All right, rebuttal? All right, perfect. All right, we'll move on to the third category, then. How would you, as a selectman, help positively impact housing? And we'll start with Mike this time.
I've been involved in the affordable housing in Burlington for 20 years, being on the Housing Partnership Committee, and so it's kind of housing, sort of near and dear to my heart. It's a little alarming to me, watching these small three-bedroom ranches all over town coming down, and the large two-story colonials, four bedrooms, four baths. Concerning to me that the first-time blue-collar type of homeowner is being priced out of Burlington, those aren't the folks that can afford those types of houses. And of course, the folks who've been here for 40 or 50 years, living in those homes, finding it challenging to make ends meet. Those homes eventually tend to fall into disrepair, and they're only attractive to developers, unfortunately. So, but we do have housing opportunities here in Burlington. We are over that 10% threshold that you all hear about regarding when we have 40B development. Burlington has been very aggressive in establishing affordable housing in town. We've got, you know, we've created probably over 300 units of affordable housing in various areas of town over the last 20 years, you know, beginning with the military housing down there. We've got the Land Swap, created 72 units of senior housing. We've got housing over at Kimball Towers, Seven Springs, Windview Heights. Most recently, over here on Third Ave, the Tremont and the Huntington, all offer affordable housing opportunities for residents, both young and as well as our seniors. And the Davis Company right now is under construction. A friendly 40B that the selectmen supported is underway. We're going to pick up 67 additional units of housing on Corbett Drive. Should be sometime, about this time next year. So we're well ahead of anybody near us. Winchell's, if you read the paper, they're struggling at 1.5%, 2% affordable housing. Bedford, everybody around us. We're doing quite well in that area.
Thank you. And Nick, same question, housing.
So when I think about housing, like Mike, I kind of break it into pieces. We have our seniors, who we are unfortunately aging out of the homes they spent their lives building, raising their families in. We have the families, the young couples, who, because of the teardowns, are finding it very difficult to move into Burlington and, you know, become part of our community. We are doing quite well with affordable housing. And then we also have our young workforce, right? All of the people who are coming to work for these big companies, who can't afford to live in Burlington because of where they're starting out with their positions. So how do you resolve these disparate things, right? It's not easy, right? But we need to look into how we can find ways to let seniors who want to stay in their homes, let seniors who want to downsize do so affordably. And I don't think that that's affordable housing, per se, but it is something that will fit into their fixed income. And then, you know, because we're doing so well with affordable housing, how do we now invite young people into the community as well, right? Because when you have a diverse community, when you have a diverse population, you start to see community build on a much larger scale, right? You don't necessarily have pockets of people anymore, because now you're forcing everyone to interact in different ways. So I really think that, you know, if we can take a look at, you know, the teardowns and, you know, finding ways to help seniors keep in their homes while inviting young people in, we may find ourselves in a very positive situation.
Rebuttal?
No.
All right. Then we are on to the last part of the BACC's question. Everybody knows it's coming, everybody loves to talk. It's the most popular point of discussion in Burlington, transportation. Nick?
Yeah? I'll be honest, I don't like this topic of conversation, because I think we've been talking about it for at least 10 years, if not longer, right? It's a conversation that I really don't want to be having in another three years. I want to be having Part B or Phase Two of this conversation. We need to figure out what we're doing with traffic, because it's only going to get worse. And I don't think that widening the roads is necessarily the right answer, because when you widen, widen, when you widen a road, when you widen a highway, you just invite more traffic. So that's not necessarily solved there, right? I think that we need to decide whether or not we want to control 3A or not. If we don't, then we need to get with the state and figure out how we can work with the state to manage 3A, whether it be, you know, finding ways to increase flow of traffic through, you know, certain turn lanes, whatever it might be. I don't have the answers right now, but I'm looking forward to finding them. And then, you know, how do we move to alternate modes of transportation, right? People are now biking more to work, you know. I know we've been talking with the Master Plan Steering Committee, getting bike lanes, bike paths, you know, more bus connections, in-town shuttles. How can we do this? And then for people who want to take advantage of public transportation, parking. Where can they park their cars? Right now, we don't have a ton of parking for people who want to utilize public transportation. I know myself, I drive all the way into Woburn and take the commuter rail into the city that way, because it's the only place I can park and know that I'm going to have a parking spot. I don't have to wake up at 5:00 in the morning and stake out my claim. So, you know, instead of just widening the roads, let's have a really good in-depth discussion about how we can find alternate modes of getting people where they need to be, both in town and out of town.
Thank you. And Mike?
Richard, thank you. Local transportation, let me start with the local transportation, local B-line. We've, I've been on that committee for six years now as well. Sadly, I have to tell you that our ridership numbers continue to decrease, and we cannot go to town meeting and ask for funding with those kind of numbers that, you know, it just doesn't support us to be running that local B-line at a level of three buses. Couple years ago, we trimmed it down to two. Ridership continued to fall. This year, we're down to one bus, while we rethink the whole transportation thing, where we're considering perhaps a voucher type of a program, perhaps utilizing like the Uber system, or partnering with the COA and using some of their services. So that's what's happening on a local level. We're just not seeing the ridership like we're used to. We're an aging population, the reasons that the ridership numbers are going down, as anybody's gassing, the people are, you know, homebound now, or nursing homes, or what have you, the folks that had been using that service. However, I do see, on the upside, Nick was alluding to, a lot of young workers, I see him at the bus stops along Cambridge Street all the time. He makes a good point, though, parking, you know. A lot of these folks aren't necessarily within walking distance of these bus stops. You know, we've been looking at some, you know, some areas around town. You know, a lot of people are parking at Simon's Park, but there's programs going on over there, so we need those parking spaces during the day. So that's a little bit problematic. I know Middlesex III and Representative Gordon have a pilot program going on right now with, you know, running some transportation shuttle services from, you know, north of here into some of the parks. But, yeah, transportation's going to continue to be a challenge going forward.
Thank you, Mike. Rebuttal? All right. Now we are going to head on to the next part of the program, which is the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce put out a call for questions. Some members of the community responded. We have five questions here. As my role as the moderator, I have sort of tweaked them a little bit, just to make sure that they are applicable to both candidates. The first one is just about past experience. What past experience, either in government, or community, or professional, do you have that you think will help you on the Board of Selectmen? And I believe this time, we start with Mike.
All right, Richard, you know, in my opening, I sort of touched on my volunteer work and my time in, you know, elected positions. What I haven't talked to you about, and I think is equally important, is my nearly 30 years of experience as a firefighter for the town of Burlington. I am in hundreds of homes every year. I see the good, the bad, and the ugly. You know, our training as firefighters teaches us to not necessarily just focus on the patient or the person that we're there to see, but we also focus on the environment that they're living in. So I see a lot of things in a lot of homes where people are having some challenges. I see the expired vials of medicine that folks are still taking because they don't want to, they can't afford to go out there and renew those prescriptions. I see a lot of things. I know that a lot of the challenges that the people that live in my community are facing and are mindful, particularly of those people, when I make decisions as a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Great. Thank you. Same question, past experience.
So I definitely touched on this in my opening statement, around my experience as it relates to the Board of Selectmen. And I have to say that, you know, beyond that, I have spent a lot of time serving in leadership roles, both in educational government, student government, as well as leadership in various organizations for the past 20 years. On top of that, in college, I minored in urban studies and urban planning. I have a great interest when it comes to how towns function, how towns work, the importance of community, the role that each of us plays when it comes to the growth and success of a town. So I think on top of all the experience that I alluded to in my opening statement, I would tack that onto it as well, and say that, you know, I'm also very enthusiastic. I very much think that not only listening is important, but finding balance between people. I think it's very rare, it's one thing to listen, it's one thing to hear somebody, but it's another thing to be able to communicate as a bit of a devil's advocate between groups, between people, to strike a balance, strike a chord, and get everyone on between people, to strike a balance, strike a chord, and get everyone on the same page, even if we don't agree with each other. I think that's the only way you can move forward as a group, as an organization, or as, you know, a form of government, is to set aside differences, whatever they may be, for the common good of the people.
Thank you. And this next question comes from somebody who's thinking big, but I guess as the old saying goes, think global, act local. It reads, "Climate change is the defining challenge of our time, threatening the lives and livelihoods of generations. So, one, what is your plan to minimize Burlington's contribution to this problem? And, two, how will you cut greenhouse gas pollution from our building, transportation, and business sectors?" We'll start with Nick. Good luck.
That's a hefty question. Wow. So I think that as, as time goes, Burlington has been making efforts to become more of a sustainable community, and I think that we need to increase those efforts. I think, like I mentioned, we're talking about traffic, right? Public transportation, decrease our carbon footprint, you know, recycle more, right? How else can we find ways to, like I said, decrease our carbon footprint while not making our town look like one giant solar panel, right? But on that note, I think solar panels are great, right? I think that there's a building across from Raytheon and Woburn, their parking lot has solar panel coverings. Not only does it supply power to the building, but it keeps cars protected during, you know, snow and rain, which I think is fantastic and multipurpose. They also have different kinds of solar powered units that don't look like solar panels themselves. They look like trees, they look like art sculptures that are, you know, talking about, you know, culture, right? It beautifies the town while putting energy back into the town, right? So how can we find ways to do that, right? So again, it's about reducing our carbon footprint, finding ways that we can, you know, recycle more, reduce our waste, and, you know, keep Burlington, you know, as great as it is.
I hope that answers everything. Yeah, I think you solved it. All right, Mike, climate change.
Ah, climate change. Well, you know, actually, we have here in Burlington, we've, we've been taking steps in that direction. We, we have begun some six or eight years ago distributing the recycle bins around town. You all see them, the green ones. Some of us have two recycle bins. The DPW department is, is very proactive in that area. Burlington does a much better job than the other people in our consortium. We're in a, our trash pickup is, we're with six or eight other communities. Burlington always leads the way in recycling. And, you know, Nick touched on solar panels, exactly right. We just finished installing last year in the Burlington High School solar panels, and we've got plans for some of our other municipal buildings as well. You know, so Planning Board and Town Meeting just recently passed a bylaw regarding solar panels. Of course, we don't want every, every neighborhood to have a solar farms, but they passed, you know, a reasonable solar panel legislation that I certainly supported. So Burlington, you know, we're making that effort, you know, there's still some work to be done. There were some students in front of us recently who had a petition, wanted us to send it along to Town Meeting to ban plastics, plastic bags in Burlington. You see that, that's happening, believe it or not, even in Boston has a plastic bag banned. So Town Meeting will be mulling that over, I don't know if it'll be May or September. So we've, we've, you know, we've got a little work to do, but I think we're a little ahead of the curve though here.
Great. Thank you both. The next question from a, from a resident. "The current selectmen appointed a government review committee to investigate Burlington's current form of government and to make recommendations on whether the selectmen should establish a second committee to conduct a full government review. And their question is, what do you think are the top pros and cons of keeping the same form of government versus changing the structure?" And we'll start with Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, you know what? That government review committee is getting a lot of, a lot of interest in the community regarding that, because we've been doing business the same way for, for some 50 years. The town administrator has put us on notice that he's leaving. The Board of Selectmen felt that this was the, the right time to review how we do business going forward. We need to be recruiting and interviewing a new town administrator. We need to know what his duties are going to be in order to attract the, you know, the type of candidate that we'll be looking for. We're not going to get candidates that, you know, who don't know precisely what their role is going to be. So that was sort of the nexus behind the, the whole government review committee. And in, in the last three months or so, we've had some very interesting conversation with some, all of our department heads. We've had some other former, current and former town administrators. We've had some other folks, professionals in the industry coming to talk to us. And we've got a very diverse group on that committee that I'm, I'm pleased to say, and I think we're going to get a, a recommendation from that group that will, will well represent the community at large. Lot of unanswered questions, premature to speculate on, on what the recommendation is going to be at this time, however.
Thank you. And Nick?
So I think when everyone hears government review committee, everyone goes, are we becoming a city? And their hair just lights on fire. I think that the government review committee is meant to, it was established for the purpose of housekeeping, right? Here we are, at this point in time, we need to make sure that our, our form of government is running effectively, right? We have a population of 24,000 and change, but during the day, we boom, up to around 140,000 people. Is our infrastructure supporting that population? And that's, that's what's important here, making sure that our DPW, our police, our firemen are properly staffed, trained, and have all the equipment they need to service a population that size. So I think that when we say government review committee, we're talking about the infrastructure of our, our government, right? Do we need to make our town administrator or town manager and provide him or her with more power to ensure that things can be accomplished on a day-to-day basis to keep up with the ever-changing needs of our town? You know, are we making sure that all the boards are reporting where they need to correctly? The whole organizational system is being looked at. And I hope that what comes out of the government review committee is, in a sense, a certain restructure that affords us this. Because moving forward, we, we can't afford a misstep because we waited a week, or because, you know, so-and-so reports to so-and-so and, and that paperwork got misfiled somewhere, right? Which happens in any good organization, but, you know, we need to be looking at it from that perspective.
Thank you. I'm actually going to jump in with a follow-up question to that one because of some, one decision that might be coming up quicker than the others. As we've reported on BCAT, Selectman Bob Hogan is making a push to have the question before Town Meeting about whether or not to change the treasurer-collector's position from elected to appointed. The reasoning that he gave is that Brian Curtin, the current treasurer-collector, has been there for 40, some 42 years or so. And during his time, the town has grown from a budget of about 20 million to 130, 140 million. So in your thoughts for certain, specific changes for things that have become much more technical, kind of where do you land on that?
It's a great question. And again, you know, when it comes to the growth of our town, ensuring that the right people are at the right positions and right levels is crucial. You know, and I know, I, I believe at one point, Mr. Hogan had said, you know, it's very easy for, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, so I'm going to paraphrase for a second. It's very easy for, for a popularity contest to ensue and for the wrong person to be elected into a very important position. You know, Mr. Hogan says himself, we are AAA bond rated, $140 million in revenue a year. So a lot of big numbers, a lot of importance with that, that we cannot afford a misstep on. So if the, the idea of moving to an appointed position to find the right candidate with the right qualifications is what we need to do, then so be it. I would hate to see an elected position like that run its term and that person just walk away, and now we have to go find somebody else to do it. You don't just take a AAA bond rating, $140 million, and just pass the buck. We've been very fortunate to have Mr. Curtin in this role for as long as he has been. And now we need to ensure that, you know, the, the next 43 years are as equally as safe.
Thank you. And same question?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you're right. We've been fortunate. We've, Mr. Curtin's done a wonderful job for, for this town for 42 years. He is a key part of our financial team. That is absolutely no question about it. The treasurer-collector, the town accountant, the town administrator are just crucial to, to how we operate here. One misstep, one, one bad investment could, could cripple certain segments of our, of our government, okay? So great care and consideration is going to be needed when, when Mr. Curtin stepped down. It's going to be in the lap of Town Meeting in May, whether they want to make that, that change or not. You know, the selectmen asked for a placeholder on the Town Meeting warrant. We don't quite have the language yet, but we have a placeholder there and we, at our next meeting, we will have that discussion and pass it along to Town Meeting in May.
All right. Thank you both. Now to the next one. As was mentioned earlier, Burlington's town administrator, John Petrin, has announced his retirement, and the selectmen will be tasked with hiring a replacement. The position requires a multifaceted set of skills and experiences. So this person asks, "What specific capability or skill do you consider to be the most important for Burlington's next town administrator?" We'll start with Mike.
Oh, thank you, Richard. Well, you know, again, we've, we've been fortunate. We've had, we've had a good run here. Mr. Petrin had, he had quite an interesting background. He was a school principal, he was a 911 dispatcher, he was a town administrator or town manager. And prior to that, we had Bob Merce here for 17, 18 years. Bob had some, some great skills. They had different management styles, but they were both highly qualified. I want nothing but the best for Burlington. And we have, given our status, we have a good reputation and we should be able to attract good candidates. We, we've got the double A-plus bond rating, you know, we've not had to deal with layoffs. We've got us, we've got a levy capacity of some $10 million that, you know, we have. We've got, we've got rainy day funds. We're in a good position, so Burlington's going to be very attractive for our next town administrator or town manager. And that's why I think it's important that we button up quickly what exactly that role is going to be so we can make that decision in the next 12 months. But I think management skills, communication skills are all going to be very important. It'll be high on, high on my priority list when we're interviewing candidates.
Thank you. And Nick, same question.
So Mike is right. We need to identify what that role is before we attempt to hire for it. When you start talking about a town administrator or town manager, I equate that to a, to a CEO, somebody whose job it is to work interdepartmentally to ensure that the town is running as efficiently as possible. And so when I think of that, I think about, you know, and I'm going to expand this a little bit. There's two, two kind of important skill sets, flexibility and leadership. They need to be able to lead a multifaceted series of departments while being able to be flexible to look ahead at what is needed, what is coming, while relying on the experts, the directors of those departments. And like Mike said, we are going to be an attractive town for that role. What we don't want is somebody who thinks that they're coming and have a cushy job. They have to work. We're not going to have somebody who's going to put their feet up and be like, well, the town is running itself. One thing that I found in, in my adventures, meeting with everybody, I sat down and met with just about every department director and heard from them, you know, how they run their department, how things are going. Two things came out of that. One was that everybody is doing, in my opinion, a great job running their departments. And two, they're enthusiastic about it. I loved seeing how enthusiastic these directors and their, their staff were for their job. That means that we've got the right people in the right positions to, to operate and be the experts of those departments. So if that's the case, then the CEO needs to be the person who's at the top, listening to those people and being flexible, leading them from a higher level standpoint for the future of our town. So that's what I'm looking for.
Great. Thank you. And the last question that we have, and it's an important one as well. "Burlington's water quality and capacity are a growing concern. Wells have been taken offline due to contamination and demand is increasing, especially over the summer times with those lawn sprinklers." So their question is, one, do you believe we should continue to invest in cleaning existing wells? And two, what do you see as both the next step and long-range solutions to capacity?" And we go back to Nick.
Thanks, Rich. So if anybody watched the Board of Selectmen meeting that happened last Monday, Director of DPW, John Sanchez, gave what some might call a riveting PowerPoint presentation. And it detailed what is happening with our water, the 1-4 dioxane, the contaminated wells, the fact that those wells are shut down right now, and that we're looking into ways to remediate the issue. So three things come up, right? We want to ensure that we have quality water, that we have enough water, and that it's a reliable source. Now, when you start talking about remediating what we have, the question gets raised around, well, what happens if more wells become contaminated, right? We only have so much water underneath Burlington. So what John Sanchez is proposing, what the, the screening study proposed, one of the options, was that we tie into the MWRA to help supply Burlington. We're not going to change over completely to the MWRA, but the options on the table to supplement from the MWRA. Where I stand on this is, it could go either way. You know, if we, if we decided to remediate, we would have to remediate all of our wells. Because if we just remediate the two that are currently contaminated and another one becomes contaminated, now our funds are going to have to be spent shutting down and remediating or to hook into the, borrow water again, the whole situation all over again, right? The MWRA right now is very attractive. The idea of being able to hook in and borrow that 1 million gallons per day that we need to help offset the amount almost seems like an easy solution. But there is no easy solution. I think that, you know, a few more conversations need to happen, are happening, and, you know, we will, I think, decide what's best for the town moving forward. Because, you know, we don't want to be back here 10 years from now saying, well, we spent all that money and now, now where are we?
Great. Thanks. And Mike?
Thank you. Yes, obviously, water, most important asset that we have in this community, is the most, the most important service that we provide to this community, and we take it very seriously. We've been studying this, this issue for some three years now. And as Mr. Prez alluded to, Mr. Sanchez gave a very well-thought-out, well-documented PowerPoint presentation to the Board of Selectmen. We've seen it before at Town Meeting. It clearly demonstrates the need for, for us to do something. And I think, as Mr. Prez alluded to, the two options we have, keep chasing those wells, keep fixing them, hoping the plume doesn't go there, or the EPA changes the rules again. I, I think the, the best way to get potable water on a, on a consistent basis, a reliable basis, is going to be making that connection to the MWRA while we continue to operate the Mill Pond Reservoir. Either way, either way, whether we chase the wells or we make the, the MWR, WRA connection, is going to be a costly decision. We're going to have to, we're going to have to pay for it. We've, Mr. Sanchez proposed a plan, a little 3% increase each, each year for the next 10 years, 20 years, to the, to your water and sewer bills to, to pay for those. Won't be, won't be raised through the levy.
All right. Great. I'd like to thank everybody who sent in questions. They really helped illuminate the discussion even further. And now we are on to the final part of tonight's candidate forum, the closing statements. We're going to go in the same order as the opening statement, so we go over to Nick.
Thank you, Rich. And thank you again at the Chamber of Commerce for doing this. Really appreciate it. So I just want to say that, you know, when it comes to me as a candidate, I bring to the table a different perspective. Years of experience in research, understanding the law, interpreting dense material, creating and implementing strategic... and implementing strategic initiatives in a collaborative nature. I'm enthusiastic and full of energy, and I'm looking to help grow Burlington through community-driven discussions and solutions. Let's find proactive and engaging ways to stay attractive to residents and businesses. I lead through example. I'm the first one to roll up my sleeves, put my problem-solving hat on, and get to work. Local government, community, friends, and neighbors, this is where it matters most. This is where our voices are heard and our actions are seen. This is where we make a difference. No, it won't be easy. Nothing good in this world ever is. But if each of us makes a small effort, we can create big impacts. Let's collaborate, bring our various viewpoints, and be prepared to listen to each other. Let's have conversations and work together. We work to raise each other up because we are what makes Burlington, and we want what's best for Burlington. I will do everything I can to bring fresh perspective, enthusiasm, and raise community engagement, ensuring every citizen has a voice and is heard, so that we are together as one Burlington for all and by all. Election Day is four days away. Your vote matters. I hope to earn one of those two votes, and I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike?
Okay, Richard, and in closing, I would like to say, there's a lot to like about Burlington. You know, every year, the town clerk sends out the annual census, and included in the census is a survey. We have consistently seen the survey return with 94, 95, 96% approval ratings in the community. People's, overall, we're satisfied, and we should be. We've got, we've got two new schools, we've got wonderful neighborhoods, we've got a robust commercial sector, a quality education system, we've got the finest public safety services available. There's no fee for trash up, we've got affordable housing options, there's no fee for school transportation, okay? We've got quality roadways and beautiful town common, and by far, the finest parks and recreation facilities anywhere in Massachusetts. You know, for six years, I just wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments the Board of Selectmen during my last six years that I've been in office. We've, you know, we're rolling out a new paramedic program. It's going to be a far superior service for the community, okay? We don't have to rely on the third-party paramedic trucks that we have today that may or may not arrive at your house when we need them, okay? We're going to brand-new DPW facility under, which is going to be going to Town Meeting for a vote in May. We're renovating the senior center, creating more options, more space for services and programs for us seniors. We've got a brand-new fire station under construction. We purchased 33 Cent Street to expand the Children and Family Services Center. We've done those in just the last six years, and we've done so while actually lowering the tax rate three out of the four years. We've done all of this at a very reasonable tax rate, and I look forward to serving for another term as your selectman. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, I would like to thank both the candidates that we have here today, Selectman Mike Runyon and Nick Priest. I'd also like to make mention of the two other candidates that are on the ballot for the two open seats. There are current selectmen, Joe Mirandi, and former selectmen, Virginia Mooney. I want to thank all of them for running and for serving, because, you know, the stronger, the more people that get involved in the process, the stronger a local government can be and will be. I'd also like to thank the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's event and giving the opportunity for people to learn more about the candidates. We have the chamber's Government Affairs Committee co-chair, Kelly Papas, who's opened our program and has been waving these flags at the candidates all night, and Chamber President, Rick Parker, who actually jumped in and handled the camera for us today, probably one of the better dressed cameramen we've ever had at BCAT. I'd also like to thank everybody who came in to hear the candidates in person and those watching at home who like to stay informed and keep up on the issues. Please remember that the election is Saturday, April 7. Polls will be at Burlington High School in the gymnasium and are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so please get out and vote. And thank you again.